All right, I'd like to call the meeting into order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Ruben.
Here.
Mayor Kothemstet.
Here.
Councilmember Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Hetkey.
Here.
Councilmember Corbin Gordon.
Here.
Everyone is present, thank you.
Thank you. Before we have the invocation, I would like to read you the statement that I have, that we kindly request all IAS members in the council chambers be seated throughout the meeting unless speaking at the podium. We also request that citizens in attendance remain in the audience seating area and refrain from approaching council members and staff at the audience. At this time, I'd like to ask you to rise for the invocation that will be delivered by Pastor Chris Frost from Mountain Bible Church.
Let's pray. Our heavenly Father, we come before you as you mean, and I give you a special thanks for our council members that give sacrificially of their time and their energies and their abilities to enhance the goodness and safety of our city, Tehachapi, California. I pray a special blessing on each member, encourage them, strengthen their families, help them continue to grow personally and spiritually. We thank you for the opportunity to recognize your presence here with us tonight and to even welcome it. We take the moment to stop and pause and ask you to free us of all worry and anxiety that may choke us of our peace and rob us of our joy and prevent us from accomplishing your will. There's a lot planned tonight on the agenda, but we ask that you divinely direct and orchestrate the agenda to accomplish your will. We pray for your kingdom come. We pray that it is in Tehachapi as it is in heaven. We pray that you would continue to richly bless this community, and may we be a place that people want to move to and raise their families and live in this great country called the United States of America. We pray that you bless this meeting, and we ask this in the name of the Messiah, the Son of the living God, Jesus Christ, and all of God's people said.
Amen. At this time, I would like to ask you to remain standing, and our Cub Scout troop is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And when they get up here, they will tell us a little bit about their -- what troop. This is really awesome, I think.
You want to speak?
No worries.
We're the Cub Scouts from Tehachapi, Pack Three, and we appreciate you guys letting us invade your meeting for a little bit and let these guys and girls learn a little bit about citizenship.
Thank you.
At this time.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under your God, in the best of all, with liberty and justice for all.
Well done.
Thank you so much, Mayfair. We appreciate that you are working to learn more about citizenship and government. It's a good thing. Thank you.
The mayor has contacted me about adding something to the agenda that came to their attention on Friday after the agenda was posted, and it's something that needs to be resolved Wednesday. It has to do with a workers' compensation claim filed against the city by a former officer for rap and a litigation matter that is arising on the sixth, Wednesday. We need to make findings that this matter came before the council, before the city, after the agenda was posted and needs to be resolved before your next meeting and actually before Wednesday. And what's the matter on the agenda?
Can you get a motion?
Yeah, a motion, second.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll second.
I didn't make it.
I thought you --
I'll make a motion.
Did you second?
Oh, um. Second.
This is also a motion.
Yes.
Yes.
All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Let the record show it was unanimous vote. Consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine and non-controversial by city staff. Consent items will be concerned, considered first, and may be approved by one motion if no member of the council or audience wishes to comment or ask questions. If comment or discussion is desired by anyone, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered in listed sequence with an opportunity for any member of the public to address the city council. Is there anyone in the audience who would like anything removed from the consent agenda? Counsel?
Item number five, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Anyone else? I'll entertain a motion to pass the consent agenda with item number five removed.
I make a motion that we approve the -- I'm sorry.
Consent agenda.
Consent agenda with removing item number five.
Have a second?
Second.
Removed and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Let the record show it was unanimous vote. Audience oral and written communications. The city council welcomes public comments on any items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. We respectfully request that this public forum be utilized in a positive and constructive manner. Persons addressing the council should first state their name and area of residence, the matter of city business to be discussed, and the organization or persons represented. If any comments are directed on an item on the agenda, that should be made at the time of that agenda item. No action can be taken by the council on matters not listed on the agenda, except in certain specified circumstances. And we remind you that we limit the speaking time to three minutes. Are there any public comments?
My name is Kapora Schmidt, and I live within the city limits. A couple of years ago, I had the understanding that a painted crosswalk would be put on Valley Boulevard at Mill. I still do not see that crosswalk painted at that location. What I do see is that students from the Jacobson School and from the high school cross from the south side of Valley to the north side of Valley in front of my house, which is located about a third of the distance between the signal that's closest to the schools over to Mill. And I do see these students crossing there, and I do see an awful lot of traffic, high school traffic, coming in very fast. And I just was wondering if you intend to put that cross, well, painted crosswalk on Mill as I had understood it before.
Would you like me to answer that? Yes, we still are. We received a grant for that project. In fact, the council approved a design contract a few council meetings ago. Unfortunately, I brought it back to you. We had a minor pickup with Caltrans. It's not going to affect the overall timeline of the project, so we do expect to make that improvement in spring or summer of next year.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Good evening. My name is Donovan Moan. I live within the city limits as well. I live down near the airport, and we often get a lot of pedestrian traffic there, wondering where they're going, where the park is, where the hangar, I mean, where the terminal is in regards to the gate. And there's a lot of confusion, and since I live so close, a lot of people tend to ask me, and I don't want to help people out, but there are signs that are faded on the airport that have been faded for a long time, and I requested that maybe the airport could focus that and reprint some new ones and replace them so that there wouldn't be so much confusion, especially when hikers come around and it's dozens a day. And yeah, so it's something that you guys can maybe help push that along. So maybe some official parking only, airport use only parking, because there's a lot of potential drugs and criminal activity going on. The park mod, it's part of that. Yeah, I don't care.
Good timing with this. We actually ordered all the signs, directional signs and so forth.
Great.
A month ago, just received them last week, so as soon as our Public Works Department has some time, we're going to put those, replace those ones that are so faded.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? If not, we will move on to item four. Disagreements and bills for RSI Patrol for October 15, 2019 through October 28, 2019.
Madam Mayor, I need to recuse myself because I'm an employee of RSI Patrol.
Thank you. Are there any questions concerning this item? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Have a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Let the record show it was four ayes and --
Madam Mayor.
I'm sorry. Did I miss you?
You kind of did, yeah. But that's all right. I will abstain from the vote.
All right. I apologize. Three ayes, one abstention by Mr. Hetkey, and one recusal by Mr. Davis. Okay. Let him come back in. I'm sorry. Public Works Director?
Item six. I don't know why you -- Sorry. Lives in --
Oh, because --
Mr. Davis.
Great, nice being --
And Madam Mayor, I would like to recuse myself from this discussion due to the fact that this is an airport-related issue, and I will recuse myself.
Thank you. Okay. Airport Manager?
All right, I'll give you the quick story, since this is a consent item. We have a lease with the Schultz family from here to 28. They're longtime tenants at the airport. This is just renewing that lease.
Are there any questions concerning this from the audience? Any questions from the council? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Madam Mayor, make a motion that we approve number five, the Aaronon School Hangar Groundways, 28W between Robert Schultz Family Trust and the city.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second. I'll go ahead.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Let the record show four ayes and one recusal from Mr. Hetkey. Item six, Public Works Director?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. So up until this point, the Tehachapi municipal code has had limits on the weight of vehicles, oversized vehicles that are allowed through town on what are known as alternate routes or truck routes. These restrictions did not have any kind of size limitations as far as length, height, width. In addition to that, these truck routes were defined in the municipal code and included areas that were now what we would consider mostly residential areas. And you can see the list there, but most of Tehachapi Boulevard, some Tucker, but also Curry, portions of Mill Street, portions of Green Street, and Denison Road are all considered part of the truck route. In addition to that, adding to some of the issues we have downtown, the overpass at Highway 58, Denison Road is limited in height. I believe it's 14 and a half feet. And so any truck on Highway 58 that is higher than that gets routed off of Highway 58 at East Stansfield Boulevard or at Tucker Road. Those oversized loads are forced off of the highway by Caltrans and they're using their oversized load permitting process. As a result of that, it's very common for us to get loads driving through town that are in excess of 155, 150 feet long. We've had a couple over 200 feet recently, and very often over 20 feet wide. This creates really undue loads on our streets downtown and obviously can create some traffic issues. And we even had one very early. We were able to actually divert that load, but it was trying to go through downtown during Mountain Festival. So you can see, this can become a major issue for downtown traffic. So what this ordinance is, or this revision to the municipal code and to previous ordinances, is to place maximum weight, length, height, and width restrictions on vehicles and establish more appropriate alternate routes for those oversized loads. We're not eliminating the ability for those loads to come through Tehachapi. We just want to tell them where to go. And so what we're trying to do is divert those, you can see on the map on the screen. The first choice is to go basically Tucker Road to Highline and then to Tehachapi Boulevard Springs and back onto the freeway. The second choice would be to take the same route and then Stuber to the freeway, and as a last resort, take Tehachapi Boulevard down the main drive. The city has been working with Caltrans to establish new truck routes for these oversized loads, and they fully support this revision to our municipal code and ordinances. We have already put in place provisions so that any oversized load that gets diverted off of the freeway at Tucker or Tehachapi Boulevard, they are required to notify the Tehachapi Police Dispatch 24 hours in advance, and the police dispatch basically notifies them or approves or disapproves of them going through town and dictates to them which route they are required to take. There are some loads that just cannot, you know, 200-foot-long load just is not going to make the turn at Willis Springs Road, so they're given the option of going through Stuber. In some cases, they can't do that either, so they just have to go down Tehachapi Boulevard. But at least we know about it, and we can control the time of day that they go and make sure there's no other special events going on, things like that. So these changes to the municipal code really help us control the integrity and improve the traffic safety in downtown streets. So staff's recommendation is that the city council introduce by title-only and ordinance of the city council of the city of Tehachapi amending Chapter 10.12 of the Tehachapi Code concerning truck routes and vehicle size limits. I will be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you. Were there any questions from the audience concerning this? Counsel?
Is the intersection of Denison and Challenger Way just too tight to use that road?
Yeah.
It's got a little jogging.
We considered actually adding that as an option number three. It is, and we were a little concerned about the Denison overcrossing as well. And then there's just a lot of jogging around that would have to be done.
Yeah. There's no real good place to go through town. Is there any issues that we've seen with the weight per axle? They have a large weighted load that obviously has to comply with Caltrans standards for per axle, so they're not tearing up our street as they're coming through.
Yeah, well, it is wear and tear on our streets, for sure. They do have to meet the requirements from Caltrans on the maximum loads per axle, though.
So if they've got a large load going down Tucker, they're notified that it'd be better after hours?
Right.
So not that quitting time for the prison or going to school in the morning, those kind of things.
Yeah. Generally, it's real early in the morning. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the council?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I just have a couple of comments. Having two very close friends who are in the oversized load trucking business and knowing the process, bidding process that they continually and repeatedly have to go through to get approval to transit not only California highways, but certain streets in some cases where they can't fit under overpasses or underpasses, I don't know that this particular proposal, when you think of a 200-foot-long load going up Tucker Road with the continual stopping and starting with the stoplights, and then you mentioned the turn radius, some of these trucks that have got significant length, the turn radius on those trucks is much greater than what we could offer, maybe not necessarily at Tucker, but it's both Stuber and Willis Springs is terrible. They will just not be able to make that corner at all. And I think rather than going with an alternative, getting them out sort of in a rural area that could potentially, and most of these loads, I mean, if we direct them, they can come after hours, but rather than getting them in a predicament where they get stuck in an area where they just cannot maneuver, I think we just promote going through downtown and we make special arrangements. You've got to remember, trucking in the United States is crucial to everything that we do. And I feel that it is, it would be a very burdensome issue with potential ramifications of getting them on Highline and then getting them on a tributary back down to the Boulevard that I don't think we really, we really need to take a very hard look at this. And I understand the wear and tear on the roads and everything else, but when you're a truck driver, you have a pilot car in front, a pilot car in back, and on and on and on and on. Sometimes CHP escorts front and back. Sometimes RPD is escorting those folks. We need to help those truck drivers through our logjam up here as quickly and as efficiently as possible rather than complicating their travel. That's just my opinion on that. Again, trucks now contribute so much to our economy, and I don't want us to become known as a quagmire of something that, you know, we've already narrowed the road going east from town. That used to be a very nice wide road. We put the curb in for the bike path, and now that, I've seen loads go down there that are very, very complicated. We just don't have the width any longer. But getting them onto Highline and then off on Stuber or Willis Springs, I just do not think that's a good idea. That's my opinion, and that's my two cents worth. We need to support our truck drivers rather than complicate their situation.
We have already had numerous loads come through that are in excess of 150 feet. In every one of those cases, we have not denied them passage through down. We have, and credit to Chief's group, the dispatch has worked very well with the trucking companies to come up with a route that works for them. So they actually, the map that you see on the screen, they actually share that with the trucking companies and say, these are the three options. Obviously, we prefer you to start with one. If you can't do that, then two, and then three. And there has been no problems at all. We recognize that they're not going to make that turn at Willis Springs. They're just not. If it's 150 feet long, they're not going to make that. That's why we've given them multiple options to choose from.
Is this really an ordinance-related issue, or is this just a procedural thing that the PD is aware of? You know, I hate to see more rules put on any books. We are a land of enormous numbers of rules. The state of California is terrible, and I don't want us to get any more complicating with additional changes to ordinance when really it is procedural in nature. And I think if our dispatch has sufficiently, and Chief, I mean, maybe you may want to contribute to the conversation, if we haven't had a problem other than the sporadic things that we mentioned, I think we just make a very well-known procedure that's in the handbook at the dispatch office. Rather than changing ordinance, let's go backwards with it.
This is a requirement from Caltrans to have an ordinance in place for truck routes. But that's your choice.
And I also believe, Don, that our existing ordinance conflicts with this.
That is true.
You cannot bring this weight, you can't stop this weight from going through Tehachapi Boulevard without an ordinance. We have truck routes designated in the municipal --
The truck routes that are designated in the current ordinance are obsolete, so that needs to be changed. But again, this is a, it's not a requirement, but it's a recommendation, and it's highly recommended by Caltrans to do this, to have an ordinance for truck routes.
Now, I know Jay has been looking into other means for getting the interchange that I've championed at Denison 58 for the last 20 years. That still has a, still might be a project on the books through KernCOP. And one of the, we do not need a full cloverleaf at Denison, but at some point, would this lend to our argument, what we're trying to do would just be a simple easy on, easy off at Denison 58. When we first went down this road, the city's already done environmental documents for the replacement of that overpass because of the height restriction. It does not meet interstate standards as it is right now. If ever we were to become part of the Interstate 40 complex, we would need to have that replaced. But it went from the inception and the idea of trying to get that pushed through years ago when I was on the board down there, from about a $6 million project to well over 20 to 20-plus million just because of cost overruns and just time. Could you elaborate, maybe if we could tie this truck route situation in with the turning radiuses in with our pursuit of on and off ramps, a simple interchange there?
Sure. That's actually the crux of what I'm working on now is that, because the Denison interchange is not at the current time highly necessary from a local circulation standpoint. However, trucks passing through town are both a heavy burden, as Councilmember Hetkey put on the trucking industry, because it adds costs in permitting and in the cost. These trucking companies also have to pay Caltrans for their escort. The longer the escort takes, the more they have to pay Caltrans, and the more complicated it is, the more they have to pay the CHP. Like, it's not free for the CHP to run an oversized load from point A to point B. They have to pay for that. So in addition to that, it's, there's really, there's never a moment that I can think of where having an oversized load through town is a benefit to the community. You know, and so the very crux of our argument for the interchange at Denison is providing on and off ramps in the same way that we have at the other exits. So what, for instance, a truck does that can't fit under the Brew Road Bridge overpass is they get off the off ramp and they get back on the on ramp and go straight through. And so the problem with Denison is there aren't the on and off ramps. And so if you're over the height limit of the bridge, you have no choice but to route all the way through town, which slows them up significantly. And so there are freight ramps that are out for the grabs these days, and there are also in-frair ramps, which is a federal grant program to replace the Tiger Grant Program, all designed for job creation and to benefit the economy based -- program, all designed for job creation and to benefit the economy-based grant programs. So yes, I've been working with Kern Cog and with Caltrans District 9 to try to put this very project on their priority list to do on and off ramps at Dennison. So that, and the basis of that argument, especially if we went after a freight grant, would be this is a benefit to the freight industry and a benefit to the city attached to have these facilities in place. So yeah, we're, a lot of work to be done. We're just skoping that work now and looking at costs, reestablishing the costs did balloon a number of years ago because Caltrans, in my opinion, unnecessarily wanted a bridge replaced. All right, so we think we propose an alternate way of doing the on and off ramps that do not require that overhead to be replaced. So yeah, working on that in parallel and, anyway, so I hope that answers your question.
Thank you. That'd be the simplest solution, I think. Not simplest necessarily in terms of dollars, but if anyone in this room just get off and get back on, versus trying to get a heavy, complicated load all around the valley, so.
It goes without saying that that's not a near-term solution.
Understand that. I've been working on it for 20 years and as long as I'm there, but.
There, if I, there is a lot of momentum nowadays. Kern County has stated publicly that their intent to diversify their economy is in logistics industry, and you see that everywhere you go, particularly down in the valley. We've been working on down at the Grapevine, the new Amazon distribution, massive Amazon distribution center in the city of Bakersfield, and all the work that Chapter's been doing. So those agencies are partners of ours in understanding that 58 needs to be a free-flowing route, which is getting less and less so because of the volume of truck traffic. And the fix is not to bottleneck them up, the fix is to figure out how to make Highway 58 a better economic corridor, and they're doing that in ways. You know, everybody knows Cracker Nation just, a bypass just opened up, it was a $26 million project, and then the city of Bakersfield is working on their $650 million Centennial Corridor project designed to allow trucks to interlink 58 ultimately all the way out to I-5. So major investment in the county nowadays in moving freight through this community. And so that's why we think now's the time for us to, to put our hand up and say that part of this is part of the, part of this.
I believe 58 is one of the busiest truck routes in the country, if not, and it's an all-weather route, which makes it very significant. Plus, we are pushing at Kern Cog, and we, in your literature, the notes that from the west coast, from the, from the actual coast through 46th and through 58 and all that, moving military operations. So there's a lot of significance for that route that we should be able to get the attention. Let's just, with the truck climbing lanes that we're, we're moving forward with and it's getting attention, it all ties together, so. Okay, so we'll keep that in mind. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I do have one more question, one more point. Mr. Schlosser said that it doesn't necessarily benefit our community by having these trucks come through, but it does, or I'm paraphrasing what he said, but nevertheless, when it costs a wide load to go from San Francisco to Los Angeles, $30,000 to $50,000 in those fees for Caltrans and the CHP escort, again, that is, as somebody said, it's not free. Those loads are not free. Well, guess what happens to those costs that it is, that are charged back to that trucking company? We all pay for that. It all comes back to the consumer. So minimizing that burden on trucking companies is, is paramount. And I totally agree with what Phil said, so, yeah, we, there's things that we need to look at.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mike Bigley from Sand Canyon. This is kind of a lot of expertise, because I do haul heavy, oversized, big loads. And there are restrictions in LA, there are restrictions in all the big cities, there are restrictions going on Highway 126. And the restrictions going through Los Angeles are you cannot haul overs, you cannot haul permit loads at all from 7:00 to 9:00 in the morning, and then I believe it's from 3:00 to 6:00 in the afternoon. So I think the quickest solution, every bit of restrict them, put them in maybe from midnight to 4:00 in the morning, they can travel through town, and that way you wouldn't have to do anything, they could travel to Tatchy Boulevard, it'd be empty, and you could get them in and out of there. And Caltrans sends me my budget updates on email on restrictions, so if there's any restrictions on it permits, it's up to them to read them and know their route. So I think that would be the quickest, fast solution for right now, is just to restrict what time they can come through here.
Any other comments from the council?
Yes, how many loads are we actually talking about in a year?
Well, obviously, we don't have any idea of when loads are coming, other than when they call PD, but I can tell you that over the last six weeks we've been tracking it, there's been probably an average of four, four or five a week.
And Davey?
The only comment I would make was, and I appreciate your comments, Mr. Heckie, but I know that once a liability has been pointed out by anyone and a government agency fails to act on that, we're the first one that going to sue when something happens. So I like Mr. Bigley's suggestions, but I don't think we can just not do anything.
Madam Mayor, conversely, if we route trucks, or we give a provider or preferred routing that puts them in a, we have that same liability. We have the exact, if not even more, because we're taking a truck, a wide load, long load, heavy load, and we're routing, snaking them through corners and tight areas and getting them off of the beaten path. And when we do that, we assume that same exact liability. So the quickest point from A to B is a straight line. It's not meandering through the countryside, out in the farm fields in the middle of the night, and you can't see half the stuff that's going on out there. So nevertheless, it's just an opinion, and I appreciate it, Mr. Marsh, with this being a discussion item at this point, but I think we've all had valid positions and concerns tonight, so let's see where we ultimately end up with this. Thank you, that's all I have.
Any other comments from the council?
I'll make a motion on staff recommendation, so that we do come in lines with our municipal code, and that we do have free alternates to have the Trucking Association be able to deal with our local police department. So I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve this.
I'll introduce it.
I'm sorry, you're to introduce it, this being my title, my title only. Thank you.
Let me get a second to the motion. Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Comment?
I just want to say that the first time that I saw these trucks coming through the city was rather frightening, that highway through the city is not big enough to handle all that truck traffic. You feel like you're, you've got to drive very carefully because here's these big trucks, and they're right about two feet away from you. You get that impression. I don't know how much distance it is, but I think this council's big priority should be public safety. You have a lot of people going across those streets. You have now added that parking place, and you've got a stopping, there's stop and move, stop and move, and you've got people crossing in these various areas, especially on the weekend. So I think you should think about that and think about the public here in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'll call for the vote.
Just a motion, but no second.
No, she said, somebody seconded it.
Mike, yeah.
Yeah, I wanted a second.
Madam Mayor, let's read the file.
Okay, I would like to approve.
I agree with you.
Go ahead.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Tatchy, the remaining ordinance number 97, oh two, six, three, three, and eighty-three, oh seven, four, eight, nine, attached municipal plates, number twelve, concerning truck routes and vehicle size limits.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Let the record show it was a 5-0 vote. Number seven, Development Services Director reports.
Um, Mayor, council members, the first item I have for you tonight is a little bit of bad news. We produced a roof rehabilitation of various city buildings, 2019. I'm going to be asking you to reject the bids we received tonight, or earlier. On October 3rd, we began advertising this project, Roof Rehabilitation of Various City Buildings, 2019 project. This is a budgeted expense that was approved by the council in the budgeting session earlier this year to, we identified needs for a new roof on City Hall, the City Hall annex, and a roof repair to BK Theater and the Senior Center. And so we've been working on preparing what we thought was an intelligent way to combine these projects for a single roofing contract for efficiency's sake, and we did that project beginning on October 3rd. We received the bids on October 23rd. Unfortunately, we only received one bid. We did require mandatory job walk, to which we only got a few participants. The problem with that is that if they don't attend a mandatory job walk, they can't bid the job, so that may have been our issue. Anyway, the bid is significantly higher than our estimate for this project, and because we only received one bid, we don't feel like it's a very accurate cost for the work that's associated with it. And obviously, the bid significantly exceeds our budget as well. And so under Article 3 of the Public Contract Code, we are allowed, or you are allowed, to reject all the bids received. And so as a result of that, we suggest that the best course of action would be to reject these bids and try to reassess the scope of the project to determine other viable options. So do we need to re-roof with a different material? Do we need to package the roofing contract in a manner that is more likely to receive the bid that we're looking for? We did speak, for instance, to one bidding, or one roofing company that attended the walk but didn't bid, and they were concerned about the way we had worded the work on the BK Theater. So did that disproportionately expand the bid expense? So as you can imagine, although we are concerned with leaks this coming winter, it is not our highest bidding issue at the moment. So my suggestion and request is that you reject all bids and direct staff to reassess the scope of the project and rebid at future date.
Any comments or questions from the audience? Council? If not, I'll entertain a motion to reject all bids and direct staff to reassess the scope of this roofing project.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Let the record show it was a 5-0 vote. Number eight.
Thank you. The second item I have for you is East Tatchy Boulevard Overlay Project, Notice of Completion. This is a little bit of good news. So as you will recall, the city entered into contract with the granting construction for the reconstruct, or the construction of East Tatchy Boulevard Overlay Project. That was repaving Tatchy Boulevard from Curry to Hayes. And following a walkthrough by city staff, it was determined that all contract items have been completed. At this time, the appropriate step is a notice of completion in order to close out the contract. As we discussed a couple of meetings ago, you asked for me to do a cost assessment commensurate with the notice of completion. I have provided a copy of that updated estimate there for you guys in paper, and I also provided a copy in the binder at the back, if anyone's interested. Quickly, the top is the, was the expected budget as performed in June of 2019 prior to the bidding of the project, and then we reassessed the expenses as of October of this year. It was, anyway, it turned out to be a good project. We managed to produce it quickly and with limited changewors, so it kept us under budget. So with that, I recommend that you approve the notice of completion for the East Tatchy Boulevard Overlay Project and direct staff to re-roof this.
Questions from the audience? Yes, sir?
Dominic from, Dominic from Downey. I think it's great that you guys completed it, but, and if this is not the proper time for this, you can redirect me and I can do it in the beginning of the next meeting. But what is the importance of repaving downtown Boulevard when there's plenty of city streets downtown that, I mean, that are treacherous, when Tatchy Boulevard is already like, you know, pretty good? And there's, I'm, especially down in my neighborhood on J Street, I mean, it's ridiculous. I worked in Detroit, I never rode over, wow. Another time, another time.
No, 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 I, I was apologizing for cutting you off. I was, I can invite you to City Hall, so we can better explain this, but the way the funding sources are set up for streets and roads, we can only spend certain money on certain streets and roads. If it were up to us, we'd have all different ones. But it's for Tatchy Boulevard only in this case.
No, I understand, but.
You're speaking with tons of logic and tons of common sense, and I couldn't agree with you more. But we can't do it.
And sir, I do agree with you on J Street. It's atrocious. Yeah, it is atrocious. It is a repair on a repair on a repair of chunks of asphalt that have flown out of there.
Just crumbs.
Yeah, it's just crumbs, and I totally agree with what you're saying.
Yeah, and I just want to reiterate one more time, because I got to get out of on the, I used to work in Detroit, you know, the city that's gone down, and the vast majority of roads were better than J Street there. This is nice Tatchy, so, okay. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Did you have something to say? All right.
Hi. I'm from Swallow Bay. I live over in that same neighborhood. It's a broken window there, so we have these streets that are crumbling and are bad. And so we have had revitalization of that area a little bit, so the homes are starting to pick up, thank you, code portion. So it's beginning to look better, but the streets are horrible. And the thing is, is that if you go into that neighborhood and you see what's there now, it still looks not good. And so is there any plan at all to get the streets fixed at some time before, I don't know, mortgages are like three years above?
Do we have any like that? I ask that all the time, but it's good to have it in the open. Are you, are you guys asking, would you like, I think the short answer is no. We've not identified those streets to receive any comprehensive rehabilitation. We do have through SV1 some funds that we haven't had in previous years that are undelegated to specific roads, which is what Mr. Garrett was speaking about a minute ago. It's not a significant amount of money, and it comes down to this big debate that we have internally over where to direct those funds. Have a few discussions here at council. We so far have not banked enough money. I think we're at about a couple hundred thousand to, don't check me if I'm wrong here, but, so yes, we're aware of the condition. What I can say is we do have a comprehensive payment management system, meaning we do know we have a complete inventory of the conditions of the road in the city. J Street's not alone in being in that condition, so, you know, debating which one gets the money first is tricky. Usually, the money is going to be routed to the roads that receive the largest amount of traffic first, because they, that money then benefits the largest number of people first. When you have limited resources, those are usually the decisions you have to make.
And that's tough for our community there, because some is light industrial, so we don't get as many residents, and so, so it's tougher for us there. And it just seems that we get forgotten a little bit out there on the other side of the tracks.
I will comment, you're not forgotten. It's just, we are trying to find additional funds for those streets, not only those streets, but all of the streets. There's a lot of them that need repaired. I would just say, if you have any significant potholes or anything, let us know about those. We're constantly about matching, and I know that it's a patch on a patch, but at this point, that's, I would say, in the short term, the best that we can do. We are trying to find funds in other places.
I appreciate, I appreciate that, because right now, the street cleaners go by, and it just makes it worse.
Any other comments?
Okay. Did you have a comment?
Well, ma'am, I would like, one moment, please. I would like for you to talk to your neighbors and come together as a group. We are your city government. Your taxes are what feeds the furnace that keeps the city going. You have the right, that gentleman has the right, to have every bit of access to your, your property and the value of your property as anybody else in this community does. I go down J Street on a regular basis, and again, I'll say what I said before, it's atrocious. You get down by the airport, that gate, it's bad. And you know, I totally agree with what you've said, what you've said, sir. You need to get your fellow citizens and neighbors together, and you need to come to us as your council members and say, we have a situation in our neighborhood and we need it addressed. Because we are here to serve you, and we need to make sure that your voice is heard and not a repair on a repair on a repair that gets sucked out by the streets of yours. Thank you, ma'am.
And if you have that meeting, I'd be happy to attend as your representative, all right?
I appreciate that, thank you.
You're welcome.
And we, we don't want to speak government ease to anybody, and we don't want anyone to feel like we're just playkeeping, you know, because we're not. to feel like we're just playkeeping, you know, because we're not. If we had access to all the money we needed, there would not be one street in Tehachapi that looked bad.
There was another comment that I brought up, uh, a few meetings ago about our grindings. I'm not sure if that a meeting. We have all the grindings that we have from the Boulevard project sitting out there, and we were going to see if there was a way that we could use those on streets, or at least on alleys. Uh, we were going to look into a binder from some vendor, yeah, to hold it together, where we could use those.
Still working with some vendors to try and come up with a solution for that. Um, I haven't been successful in finding anybody that really is going to say they have anything that will work, so, um, still, still working on that.
A lot of the streets, like on J, and I'll tell you, out to, to the east, past the cemetery, there are actually the worst streets out that way, just falling apart. Um, and it's embarrassing, you know, that you, that you want to fix every one of them. Uh, and we'd like to fix them the right way, which is to, if they're alligator so bad, they're, it needs to be taken out and then re, and repaved with new, versus just a flurry seal, which is just a, a Band-Aid year after year after year. But, uh, if it's so bad, we're going to have to do something. But let me know.
Thank you. And we have not voted on item eight yet. I need a motion to approve the East Tehachapi Boulevard overlay project and notice of completion.
I make a recommendation that we approve, uh, item eight, uh, the completion of the overlay project.
And I'll second that.
Moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Let the record show it was a 5-0 vote. City managers report.
We're coming back to you.
Uh, Mr. Davies, councilman reports, do you have anything?
Uh, no, I'd like to just say that, I know they, they already left with the Boy Scouts, but I appreciate them coming in.
They're still back there.
Oh, they are, okay, thank you, guys, I'm sorry. I spoke to you on the phone quite a few times, I appreciate you guys coming in and doing that. It's, uh, a great honor that you guys came in and do that for us. And we, hopefully, we can help you with your merit badges. Um, and then I'd just like to say, I've had a lot of conversations about Tehachapi Boulevard, how it looks, uh, positive things about the city, um, how clear the city is, and it just, it's pretty, uh, pretty positive.
Thank you. Mrs. Pocantore?
Just, I noticed the, should we go? I've noticed, again, how smooth Tehachapi Boulevard is. It's, it's very nice to go on Tehachapi Boulevard now, and the striping is very nice. I only wish that the whole city looked like that, so...
Thank you. Mr. Henke?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, I would like to echo, uh, Mr. Davies' appreciation for the Cub Scouts coming in. Uh, as a lifelong Boy Scout, uh, who still lives by the mottos and the laws of the Boy Scouts, and the very, very significant motto of be prepared. We all learned this past week on what it means to be prepared, or what it means to be, or to unfortunately not be prepared. We can't rely on government, we cannot rely on the power companies. We have to rely on ourselves to be prepared for situations that may, uh, impact us in our lives or in our livelihoods. So I would, um, I would suggest and recommend that anybody that is here in attendance tonight, and pass it on to your friends, neighbors, and family, go take that extra step of making sure you've got some candles. Make sure you've got 15 or 20 gallons of water. Some very, very essential things, because the next time something like this happens, that gap may be bigger. You know, the day or the two days, or, you know, pushing three that some of us experienced, it can be a lot worse than that next time. We have to be prepared. And that's all I have, and that's, that's just a little bit of word of wisdom, and that all originates with the Boy Scouts, so, thank you.
Thank you. Um, I, I too would just like to thank the Boys, the Cub Scouts, or the Boy Scouts. I was in Girl Scouts, and, um, I loved everything that we did, so you guys got a lot of years to enjoy yourselves. And with that, we, if we have nothing else, we are going to adjourn.
Number 10.
Oh, I forgot, I know, I can't read tonight, I swear.
It's all right.
I put you off, so I can forget about it.
That's great, all right. All set?
All right, this is something I asked to be put on the agenda. Uh, the state in their infinite wisdom, uh, this would be, uh, Caltrans has, uh, suggested that they want to withdraw funding from three very, uh, important projects. One's in Madera on Highway 99, one's in Telleri on 99, and then one is on State Route 546 in Kern County. And we're all asking agencies within the Kern Council of Government's regions and other regions that we partner with, San Luis Obispo, Telleri, Fresno, COGS, uh, to, uh, state our opposition to pulling those funds from those projects. Um, 99, uh, California is the fifth largest economy in the world. California provides one quarter of all the food products in the United States of America. And 99 is the corridor of, of highest use for those products. Our east-west corridor, as we talked earlier, going over from the coast, uh, is a very significant corridor as well. Um, the corridor for 46, I believe, since I've been on Kern Cog, I know you hate telling how long I've been on there, but it takes forever to get something passed. When I started on there, we started in on segment improvements on 46 from, from the coast, from San Luis County, San Luis Obispo County to Kern County. We have one segment left, and I think it was in the, in the, in the background documentation. This is, this is going to be the golden spike, correct? Of the, of the 46 corridor. And it's in an underserved community of Buttonwillow in that area. If you've ever come from the coast on 46 and you, you have the Y where it connects, goes up to Fresno, then comes back over toward Bakersfield, that grate. Uh, if we can just get that finished, then you would have the, a safer route, uh, for that, taking it from a significant high accident rate route to a very, to a manageable lower rate of accidents. So we're asking that the council approve this, uh, this letter to the, uh, Chairman of the California Transportation Commission, so that we can voice our opposition and stand together, not with just all the cities in Kern County, but throughout the Central Valley. And that's where the numbers count, when you're all together on this, and we ask that they, uh, rescind this, this, uh, idea of taking this money out of the projects right now. We've, have areas where we've already spent the money for, uh, you know, the, the documentation for environmental, somewhat, in some areas, right away, uh, we're down to construction on a lot of these, and now you're asking just to pull the plug. It doesn't make any sense whatsoever. So that Sacramento, I'm sure they've got some other project they'd like to spend it on, but since everything's been placed in motion in 2016, we were asked to push our project to 2018, which we said, okay, we can do it, it's dire times, whatever, and now it comes up to 2018, now they want to rescind that, so that's what this is all about. Our support, not just for Kern County region, but with our partners that we've already partnered with on the coast to get these, uh, segments done, and then our partners in the Central Valley, so that's my spiel. Appreciate your support.
Are there any comments or questions from the audience concerning this?
Michael Liewler, um, the money being redirected for the high-speed rail, so I would suggest you petition the governor as well as Caltrans.
Yes.
Um, and if you guys want, we got a petition, the ones recall the governor, so, uh, might get on to the two. Thank you.
Thank you. If any of you have ever driven on Highway 46 and not seen at least one near miss on that road, then, you know...
You were lucky.
Yeah, you were lucky, or you were asleep, one of the others.
Hopefully.
I hate that road, so, I mean, it's, that is, it's such a, an important thing to, to finish that, so... Any other council comments?
Just a comment that we have lost community members on that freeway as well.
Yes.
Madam Mayor, I just had one comment, it was brought up earlier by Mr. Schlosser about the fantastic situation that now exists at Kramer Junction. And when you see, I had to run somebody down to Barstow the other day, and I was surprised that when I went through that area, I mean, how many times have we heard the term blood alley? We hear that over and over, because it, it is a terrible, treacherous road. 46 is the same. Kramer Junction, 395, 58, that was all the same. When you go on that highway now, you can go from Tehachapi all the way to Barstow without stopping.
Wow.
It's unbelievable. And if you need to go for a Sunday drive, just go do that, because it is amazing to see what efficiency and correcting things that have been sort of historical in nature for our highway system, what, what that means to fix that. So I fully support it. If we can get behind, uh, getting some, uh, some language in front of the folks that are important to make those decisions, including the governor. I mean, it needs to go right to the top, because there's some things going on in Sacramento right now that are really unacceptable, and it impacts us at the, at the bottom tier of government. So Phil, uh, I fully support your efforts.
I appreciate that.
And we just had a, uh, a meeting several months, or a couple of months ago, with a, with a representative from the governor's office about all regions rising, and they're talking about how LA and the Bay Area can get all the funding for most every project in the, in the state, that we should focus on the Oakland Valley, and this is exactly, it's like you get talked to at one point, and then at the next level, okay, we're going to take that money for what we just said, just to, just forget what I just told you, and we're going to move that money somewhere else. So, uh, I think we can get somebody's attention here, including the governor, that, that would be, especially when it, it goes to that, uh, idea that all, all regions rising, this would meet that criteria as opposing it, so...
Do you mean the motion fits, or just direct staff?
Just direct staff. And that we're going to adopt a dozen resolution.
Okay.
Yes, you better have a vote. I think it would mean more too, if you had a council.
I'll make the, the motion that we, uh, adopted, the, the resolution as presented.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Let the record show it was a 5-0 vote. Are there any other, um, comments from the council?
Well, yes, there is.
All right.
I have one. With the PSPS, uh, the shut offs.
It's P S, P S.
Public Safety, so all was bad through the blink, which is, my power's low right now, I guess. Um, I'd like a letter of opposition, or whatever we need to send to the state folks that say, look, this is unacceptable. Uh, you know, if there's other ways to route electrical energy to, or turn off the energy that's going through an area that's susceptible to fire, and we're not part of that, they should be able to switch it and leave, leave us on, I would think. So however we need to get their attention on this, I think that would be, I'd like to direct staff to, or ask that we direct staff to come up with a letter of, you know, opposition.
We can't take action on that.
Okay, but on the next agenda.
Or the mayor could also direct staff.
I will direct staff if there are no other objections, to write a very strong letter.
Thank you, I think we know way more about this topic than we need to know, quite frankly, and we can put together a letter tomorrow morning and send it out to the governor, to the Public Utility Commission, to our representatives, and to the utility companies.
Because we're hanging out here with, you know, the Public Utilities, uh, Commission oversees this, we're just a small town, but still, every, there's a lot of big towns that are affected by this as well. And I think there was a, there was an issue at St. Louis Springs, someone lost their home by using a generator, correct? Is there any input on that, uh, what happened, or my comment would follow on, like, could we have a workshop for the community or from the entire area with the fire department? A small workshop, anybody's interested, if you've got a generator, how to use it correctly? It's not just keeping it away from, from the house for carbon monoxide, it's also so you don't burn your house down. And, you know, what to do with the thing, how to, how to plug it in, just a simple workshop for folks. If they've got a generator, they just buy or something, uh, it's not just a matter of pulling the cord or picking it up, but, you know, I'm just asking if we could do something like that as a community involvement.
We'd like to talk to Key and Dominic and others about that. I'm a little hesitant because of, you know, we talked about liability. Uh, my first and foremost would be to, you know, not allow the power to be shut off in the city of Tehachapi. The outline area, sometimes there may be an issue with that, certainly. Generators are useful when you want to plug in your refrigerator, say, but if you're going to backfeed in your, your main panel of things, it opens a ton of issues.
Well, that's, that's got to be a profession we've done anyway.
Absolutely. So we will, we'll take that into consideration.
Okay, I just throwing stuff out there, because a lot of people are really upset here.
Yeah, and rightfully so.
Yeah.
Rightfully so.
And Mr. Smith, I think, I would like to know personally, and I think the council could use the information that we gathered regarding how much waste occurred, how much food got thrown away by Walmart, how much got canned by Save Mart or Albertsons or anybody else, even if it was a rough number that was conveyed back to the city. Because that's where, again, like I mentioned earlier, we all pay for that. We all pay for that in one form or one way or another, and I think it's important to understand what that little exercise that SCD did to us ultimately cost our community in the form of, of lost goods and services. Maybe we could somehow pull that together.
We're working on that from the business standpoint, we reached out to several's just to see what, not only what they lost, but what they had to spend and repair. Um, there were a few restaurants that purchased real, we had electricians come in and spent thousands because that, the risk of losing $20,000 of inventory, so...
Sure.
We're, um, so we're, we're definitely, I think there might be a way to possibly expand the residential piece, but from the business standpoint, what we've been spending and repairing, what they actually had in losses, we're trying to collect that. It's going to be rough, you know, um, some of the estimates, but we're working on that piece of it.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other comments from the council? Now, we're going to, um, go into closed session. If there are any votes taken that need to be reported, our attorney will come into this room and report them after the, the closed session. Thank you.